Instead of eight hundred and eighty thousand, is there some other change anybody wants?
Did you get, I have a question. Did you get estimates on the projects that you are listed here but not identified with a dollar amount?
Um, yes.
Did they go down at all?
Yes.
What were their projections?
Sunrise would be one hundred and eighty nine thousand three hundred. Gale Avenue would be two hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred. Uh, Sixty-Eight Street would be two hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred. Old Fields.
Old Field?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
I have that on a list here. I didn't put that one out there.
Well, and while Dan's looking for that, everybody could see the original prices just next to the projects listed.
Old Field was three hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred dollars versus the four thirty. Believe we have, uh, capital. Capital wasn't the amount of one hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred.
That's it.
Hundred what?
Sixty-four thousand one hundred.
Thank you.
Dan, I just have one question. On the Richard Road, you were originally showing twenty-one thousand. You said that should be twenty thousand five hundred, but the detail sheet behind it shows sixteen thousand five hundred.
Correct. And while that detail sheet didn't have some of the pricing on there or the updated pricing from the time previous, so I'm already looking at things that were probably two, three months old at this point.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? Yes?
Okay, back to Sunrise and Gale. So, just for the viewers, those are two projects that on the ditch rating alone rank really high. One of the top
Meaning?
High, high in need of repair. So, the top five, Sunrise being number one. And so what happens here is with the new ditch and road system that we now use together, let me understand if this is correct. It looks like Sunrise is on schedule to be done in 2018. And Gale, do you remember what Gale?
Gale, um, I believe it's twenty, twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen for the ditch, I believe it is.
Twenty sixteen, okay.
Twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen. Let me see if I can find that real quick here.
Yeah, right, but it has the ditch next.
Twenty fifteen, excuse me.
It has the ditch next to it.
Twenty, twenty fifteen will be the proposed ditch, twenty sixteen the roadway.
That was tempting with the rebate or with the abatement for me.
In other words, to not do the
Struggling to say, okay, do we give back the money to the residents for the five hundred thousand? Or do we do these two projects? That was on my mind a lot. I talked to some residents. The people that I talked to all said, does the city need the money? It's fifty bucks or up to a hundred. And people I talked to said, if the city needs the money, and I took the stance of need versus want or program, and these to me are more needs. So I was like, yeah, thank you. But then, but then there's a lot of seniors and through the survey, I figured, you know, it seems clear that everybody wants the money. So, that's where I kind of ended on that.
Yes.
Can I take a moment and just kind of explain where we've been with the ditch program, Scott, if you can, uh, Scott's gonna put
Right now, you have ten items.
I'm sorry?
You have ten items in this, uh, six of them are in the budget and four are taken out.
Right, I'm just real, I'll be real brief on this. Basically, what Scott has put up right now is the ditch program, and we'll do the history on the ditches first of all, so, um, again, it's up on the screen. I'm gonna go off the board here. The completed ditches in 2012 were two thousand six hundred and forty feet. 2011, six thousand seven hundred and eighty feet. 2010, almost six thousand feet. Uh, in 2009, twelve thousand two hundred feet. Uh, in 2008, ten thousand. In 2007, six thousand. Uh, in 2006, fifty-six hundred. In 2005, seven hu- excuse me, seven hundred feet. So basically, what we've completed is nine points, almost nine and a half miles out of a twenty-six, uh, twenty-six mile worth of ditches. So again, I just wanted to do a quick recap, and you could see how we've laid out the maps now, and this is something that we're doing with in-house.
How much is the ten gonna cost us?
How much is the what? I'm sorry?
The ten ditch, uh, the stormwater ditch projects, you have ten items total listed.
Eight hundred and eighteen thousand.
Well, if it's all ten?
Oh, all of them.
I believe that'd be one point.
Somebody out, got a calculation?
Give me a second. You're adding
All of them, right?
You're adding three ninety-five hundred, one sixty-four one hundred, two eighteen five hundred. Four sixty-two.
Did you get the one eighty-nine?
One point six.
One eighty-nine three hundred.
Yeah, one eighty-nine three hundred.
I get just over two million, two million sixteen thousand.
Yeah. Is that the, based on the revised numbers, Mike?
I believe it is. I think I started with eight.
I just gave those
Two million what?
Two million oh sixteen.
Yeah, well, close enough.
Just over two million, two million sixteen thousand.
You're getting close.
To what?
To what I was expecting. That eight, that eight, that eight eighty wasn't gonna make it. Unless you change, so we've got about two million dollars of projects listed. Which of those do you wish to have a motion on to do?
They're only asking for the eight eighteen.
We're only asking for eight eighteen, John.
Repeat the eight eighteen. You're not gonna do Richard's Road?
Whatever number's not here, other carbon ditches are out, so there's some discussion on the ones that are showing a zero here.
Those should be included, I think, or they're talking about those.
Are they included or aren't they?
They're included.
That's ten.
Yeah, every year, every year we struggle with that.
The one thing I should, the one thing I should, you know, at least let the council aware of, if, on the Capital Projects Fund, the way the budget is recommended, looking out in our fiscal year sixteen budget, that ends with a fund balance of a million, approximately a million two. And we've been transferring, there are, you know, three million this year, but anticipated a million six, million three. So, in a, in a perfect world, um, you know, I feel comfortable in that, in that million two and carrying that over. But there was others that may look at this and say, well, Brian, in a three-year period, there's still a mil, there's still some capital money that could be used. And again, it's not a right or wrong, because the budget we presented still holds five hundred thousand above and beyond that one point two million. So, a- as everybody's thinking about abatements and thinking about a bunch of different things, there's, there are options. So I just want to make sure the council feels free to talk about things as you're doing now. But again, explain that the Capital Projects Fund is carrying money out for several years, and it finally looks better than it has in the last several years.
Yes.
Um, we've talked about Sunrise, and we've talked about Gale over and over again. And I, I'm not promoting the idea. I realize Old Field has issues, and as does Capital Lane. But I've been out to Gale Avenue myself after rainfalls. I've seen the flooding that's taken place out there. I've been out to Sunrise. I've seen the same thing over there. If we were to consider any of the items that do not have a price in the original budget, I would say that we need to consider Sunrise and Gale, which would add probably another, what, four hundred thousand dollars. Instead of the eight eighteen, it would be, what, one point two. That's, I don't, I wouldn't ask for more than that at this point. I would put off Old Field to another year. But I think Sunrise has been talked about a lot, as has, as has Gale. And I, and I realize those are an alderman showers word, but Gale comes up almost every municipal services meeting.
It does.
Plus how many communications I get per year is averages about seven or eight after every rainstorm, so you know where I stand on that, so.
Anybody who watched the, these meetings last year will recall, we had lengthy discussions about these types of projects. I don't think we want to get into that level of, uh, discussion and, and length of things. I think the budget as presented by the administration is right, any amount to add additional capital projects to that, I think will have negative impacts in the coming years. Even if you look at the balances into the future, they are incrementally getting less and less. If you look at the budget as presented this year and take the revenues and expenses in the general fund and capital projects fund together, we are proposing to spend one point two hundred and sixty-nine, one million two hundred and sixty-nine thousand more than we're bringing in as is. If you add another five hundred thousand dollars to that, we're talking about spending close to two million dollars more than our revenues. I don't think that's acceptable. I don't think, you know, we can do business like that continuing into the future. I think we ought to be satisfied with the projects that we have and move on it as is without making changes.
Yes.
Well, I did a five-year history on, you know, our unbalanced budget, and I came up with one point two for the fourteen, fifteen year. I think that it's, it's a discussion that, you know, we don't necessarily have to put in right now, but it's something that I think needs to be on all our minds, and if we can maybe incorporate it within the next three years of, of looking at this for fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, I think that's fair.
I think e- every year we go through the budget and it's appropriate to revisit for next year. But if, you know, we wanna have additional projects like Gale or Sunrise, then we'll need to take some of the other ones off. I, I don't think we want to add to it. We can substitute if that's appropriate, but adding more projects at this point, I don't think is the right way to go.
What about Old Field and Capital Lane?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Dan, what's your projection on, uh, ditches, the number of ditches and, uh, estimate of what they would cost for next fiscal year?
Approximately the same.
Is this eight hundred and eighteen thousand?
Yes. We're trying to use level funding across the board here, just based on history and what the council has been accepting.
Dan, would you be
We've allocated about seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Would you then be looking at Gale, Sunrise, and Old Field?
If the council's gonna approve, uh, obviously ditch projects, the answer is yes.
So, at most, those people would have to wait another year?
Correct.
I think, Dan, when
And let me back up. I believe that on a ditch program
You'd have to revise your road program.
Yeah, Gale would be done next fiscal year, but Sunrise wouldn't be done until the
Because the road is not done.
Yeah, the, the, this, the street on Gale Avenue is, is projected to be done in 2016.
Correct. So there's two factors of it. Right now, you know, if we're basing it on the roads, when the roads are gonna be done, that will trump the priority list. So if there's additional funding, that the city council would like to invest in the ditches, then again, I think that's what Elmer Belkey is referring to this evening. So I can't give you an answer, um, a hundred percent answer.
Dan, one of the things to point out, though, with Old Field, you did originally have Old Field in this year with the road to do next year. And because of the magnitude of the projects, I had asked Dan to look at those, and then Dan, uh, and I agreed to postpone not only the ditch one year, but the road out another year. So that was one where we actually did revise, already revised the road program and put that road off another year.
Another thing we're not including in the balance right now is we just talked about the vehicle replacement program. And those projections are not included for fiscal years fifteen and sixteen.
Well, they are, Halil, out of operations. I've allocated, um, I've allocated money under the streets.
Where, where would they, where'd they appear?
They would appear in the streets budget. The streets, I'm sorry, municipal services under capital, um, equipment. And if you look on page forty-one, out in years fifteen and sixteen, I have a hundred and eighty thousand in each of those years. And that contemplates, um, lease, lease financing of, of vehicles. And obviously, that number will change a bit if we able, we move to the trackless this year. So I will look at those numbers again for next year's budget process, but I, we are allocating for vehicle replacement.
Okay, yes.
So I think, John, what we're saying at this point is we're, we're looking to approve eight, eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Eight hundred and eighty thousand, that's what
Eight hundred and eighteen thousand.
Eight hundred and eighteen thousand.
The new number, at least on the beds, correct.
But that, the new number doesn't include anything like, uh,
Gale, Sunrise, Old Field.
Sunrise, Gale Avenue, and Sixty-Eight Street, those three. Is that right?
Sunrise.
I'm sorry.
And Sunrise, does not include Sunrise.
Does not include Sunrise, right. So, we have a motion to spend eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars on capital ditch projects. Anybody have any second, wanna make a motion? Got a motion? Is there a second? There's a second.
That's on, that's what's on, on here, I guess, if they have objections, yeah.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One no.
Who's the, who's the no on what? What is your no for?
I, I have a, it just seems like it's too much ditch projects.
Oh, the eight eighteen, you mean, is too much ditch project? In your opinion, the eight eighteen is too much ditch projects? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And, and just to clarify, we, you know, historically have called those ditches, but if you look at the larger project on Seventy-Ninth Street, that's not a ditch. That's a hu, a large culvert replacement. So again, just to clarify for the residents, there's, you know, they're not all ditch projects, and some of those are stormwater. And Dan, I listed, um, Richard Road, that's a twenty-one or twenty thousand five hundred. That's some very minor ditch work.
That's not, that's not, that's actually storm sewer work.
Storm sewer work, so that's not even ditch, okay.
We had a motion, we had a second. All worth, it's carried six to one for eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Five to one.
Yes, Sylvia is not here, so.
It's five to one.
Five to one, sorry. Anything else on that one?
Well, just, just to clarify now, the, the council is in accordance with the ditches as presented. Is there motions or is there discussion out to include anything on top of that? Or by the coun, by the council saying yes, does that mean that's, that's all the projects? You're, okay.
Under stormwater ditch projects, under that account number.
Yes, under that, just, so that's, that's the amount, okay.
The amount is eight eighteen thousand.
Got it.
Got it?
Yeah, it always appears, it, it appears to me, uh, in, in our discussions, sometimes we have, uh, the aldermen who have the ditches and culverts and storm sewer issues in their ward versus those that don't. And, you know, I, I would hope that both, uh, Halil, you know, we had this debate last year.
I wouldn't put it that way, Madam Mayor.
Well, I mean, I, that's what I see. I, I, you know, we all have to think, think, uh, in the larger picture here of what, what would benefit all the areas of the city of Darien.
But we also need to look at our overall budget and make sure that it's balanced, and then we don't put ourselves in the hole in future years.
That is correct.
Yes.
Well, I mean, hello, just to balance that, though, you know, if a resident says, I don't have ditches, but I'm paying for someone's ditches, they have curb and gutter, and we redo, we redo those curb and gutter in their streets, so I mean, they get that money as well. So I mean, I don't think it's unfair to say that somebody has, I mean, I don't have that many ditches in my ward, but I think Gale and Sunrise are worthy projects, because that's gonna improve the infrastructure of the city of Darien. I mean, that's the way I look at it. I mean, if a resident in my ward said, why are you promoting the idea of fixing ditches when we, when we don't have ditches? I would say, but you get curb and gutter repair in Ward Five, that they don't get, they need ditches repaired. So I mean, I think, there's a trade-off.
Always a balance.
I, I didn't say anything. I didn't say anything about the difference between wars and like that, you know? You're trying to
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just
Issues and trying to put words in my mouth, please. I didn't say anything like that. I'm only pointing out to the budget as we have it. And as you look out into the future years, our balances are getting lower as is, and if you increase the spending this year, it's gonna get even lower. So where is the money gonna come from? That's the, that's the real question. That's the, that's the question we concentrated on last year. We spent a lot of time. I didn't wanna go back there again, so let's not, please.
John, if I could just also
Yeah, it bothers me a little bit that you, I, I don't want to paint for the residents watching that this city is in dire straits financially.
We're not, but we could be if we increase our spending.
I think we do a very balanced approach, as you can see, projecting on
Right, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to, you know, make sure that it stays that way, Madam Mayor.
I just want to make sure that residents don't think we're in, in dire straits.
Oh, no, we're not. I didn't mean to imply that we're in dire straits. Uh, I'm just, make sure that we won't get into dire straits in the future.
I have a question. Dan?
Yes.
You have items here called sidewalk, uh, replacement, and a few others. With the eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, does that change any number in any of the other categories?
No.
So it's clean?
Correct, as presented this evening, yes. And if we're referring to the sidewalk program, um, there's several line items, and let me know if you'd like me to go through them.
I'm sorry, John, I just wanted to, again, for, for the residents again, and for the council, just remind everybody, 'cause sometimes, or periodically, I'll get questions about, well, why are we doing ditches? Certainly, from our perspective, the ditches are something that, um, our infrastructure, we own. But I think more importantly, these came about because a lot of the basins that were never done in the city over the, probably, um, I think maybe, yeah, ten years, one maybe before Dan, but I think a couple after. That enabled us to really improve our ditches and our drainage, because if, if Dan would have proposed these projects before the basins were done, all that would have done is flood somebody else downstream. So at least our approach now has been, since those basins have been completed, that really gave us the ability to tackle a lot of these projects. And again, I'm only mentioning that because I remember getting periodic questions on that. Thanks, John.
The motion was carried on the modified capital plan for eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Next item is a sidewalk replacement. It is down from last year. It's got, it's got fifteen and fifty-six. I have a hard time with that.
Fifteen and fifty-six.
The discretionary, the fifty-six is in the maintenance budget. The fifteen thousand discretionary is a joint project, Dan, with the school district, so go ahead.
Correct. And with the fifteen, well, I'll go back, let me start up at the top. The fifty-three thousand, uh, three hundred dollars that's proposed basically includes the replacement of about twenty-seven hundred to twenty-eight hundred slabs of sidewalks. So if everyone was to be in front of their house, you could see where the joints are separated. That's what it basically equates to. Our figures are down even con, uh, approximately twelve, twelve percent comparison to last year. And obviously, we undertook a major sidewalk removal and replacement program years ago. Today, again, we are on maintenance, strictly on maintenance. So again, this is, that fifty-five thousand three hundred is for approximately twenty-eight hundred slabs of sidewalk. The fifteen hundred is for, um, American Disabilities Act, uh, for the sidewalk at the corners, in which case we're sometimes, you have to replace Yes, fifteen hundred. No, fifteen hundred.
Is it fifteen thousand and
No, fifteen hundred is in your normal sidewalks to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Correct. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm going through line by line over here, so you don't see that. Totals dollars of fifty-six thousand eight hundred. I was just giving you the subcomponents of that. I apologize. In respect to the fifteen thousand dollars that you refer to, this is something that was brought up to staff earlier last, uh, last year. Elm Street, fronting Hinsdale South, uh, there's a portion of sidewalk, I'll refer to it as a missing link of sidewalks. We went back to Hinsdale South, requested of them to, if there was some joint participation opportunities, and they were willing to invest seventy-five hundred into the project as well as, provided that the city was gonna also invest seventy-five hundred dollars in this joint project. Obviously, of the fifteen thousand, it will cost us seventy-five hundred and the school seventy-five hundred.
Then why do you show fifteen thousand?
I still have to show it as an expense.
They'll show the reimbursement in a different
You know, the, actually, the reimbursement should come into the Capital Projects Fund specifically. And not the general fund, so I'll make that adjustment.
You'll change that?
I will add, in, in the revenue for the Capital Projects Fund, I can add that reimbursement amount.
Do you show it anywhere now?
It's not shown on, it's not shown here, correct, no.
It's not in the general fund reimbursements right now either?
Not, no, not specifically. And I'll verify that, but as I recall now, it's not in there as a specific number.
Okay, that covers it. Now, crack seal program is very aggressive again. You, you spent ninety-two thousand four hundred hours last year, and this year you're asking for a hundred and one two fifty.
Correct. What we're up to right now on the crack seal program, we're beginning to, we're beginning to do roads that are, um, we do them, first of all, in every three-year cycles. Every road gets crack filled every three years, up to a period of nine years at nine twelve maximum. Again, I'm gonna put it at nine. So with that said, there's some roads that we're gonna be going back into that will be approaching for the third time now. You know, whatever that road could be, let's call it X Y Z road. In other words, it's been done. It'll be, this'll be the third application for it.
Is it worth it?
In my opinion, the answer is yes. And I know we also did a cost, uh, the Municipal Services Committee discussed this item, I believe was two months ago. It was a, a cost comparison. Now, to put a real dollar value to it, you'd have to take every street and, and assess it individually. Again, the reason for that is every street has a different type of traffic on it.
Some, uh, get little lines, and some will get very long ones. Like Exner is a very long one.
Well, again, it's based on the driving, and that's due to the different types of traffic that's generated on those types of streets. And Exner would be a collector's street. I'm not sure if the chairman would like to expound on that at all.
Anybody else have any comments on crack and seal? The curb and gutter program
Tina had a question, John.
Is this, 'cause this is more road, like the whole road. So, there's also funds put aside for the miscellaneous calls you get, correct, to where the road is crumbling, and it's not the road itself, but just in a small area that you fill in?
Yes, that's a separate, that's a separate item. I believe what you're referring to is patches.
Right.
Uh, correct, yes.
So what account is that in?
That's in the MFT account. Motor fuel tax, uh, for
We haven't done much of that in the past, those big patches.
Well, Tina, you're maybe not asking about even large patches, even small potholes type things, yeah.
Cause I know I had a spur of the moment one last year on Eleanor, and it was no problem, so I was wondering where the funds are for that.
Yes, it's in, uh, and when we get to that line item, I can refer to what we're looking at specifically.
Well, say that one more time.
Yeah, Motor Fuel Tax Fund.
Oh, MFT Fund, okay.
Yes.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
Out of curiosity, how, how many years do you extend the life of a road just by doing the crack seal program?
Right now, I could probably say, safely say, two years, I think is what the consensus was, uh, based on the report. You know, two to, two to three, conservatively, I'll stick with the, the two at this point. And, um, again, you know, some of those roads that are less traveled will get that three.
But Dan, in addition to actually saving the two or three years, what it, the, the idea, though, is it also reduces the future cost of base repair.
And that's correct, that's something right.
In addition to the livelihood, you, you hopefully, or the theory is, you'll have less repair costs as you get to that road.
And as a matter of fact, Seventy-Ninth Street, I think is a great example of that. Seventy-Ninth Street was done as, as a cost comparison, to which case we could say that we've probably saved close to twenty thousand dollars by not doing, uh, base repair. Or base repair that could have been required due to not crack seal on it, for example.
If you look at the, if you go back two, three years and you look at some of the original, uh, road catalogs, and you looked at their projected date for total repair, and you see that they've been crack sealed, you could see where they, we've projected out that date. We've expanded that date based on the fact that the crack seal has prolonged that. That, I mean, that's a very tedious thing.
I believe that, that it does prolong it. You know, I'm kind of a believer of the three years, too. There's no way we can ever absolutely be sure on that kind of stuff. Any other comments on crack seal?
When, when we, um, when we looked at this at the Municipal Services Committee, actually, we did come up with some estimates of how much it's saving. And as an example, if you have a road that costs two hundred thousand dollars to resurface, and if it lasts ten years, that's like twenty thousand dollars per year in the maintenance of that, of that road. If you extend it by two years, you save basically forty thousand. And then the crack seal program for that road doesn't cost forty thousand. It costs like, uh,
Six thousand, maybe, if you bet on a small road.
So you end up saving basically thirty-four thousand dollars just for that road.
And not only, aesthetically, it looks better, filled with the crack. It looks like we were maintaining the road properly. Anybody else a comment on crack seal program? Okay, the next one that we have on here is curb and gutter. You had three nineteen last year, this year you got three sixty-one.
Correct. And I've had three sixty-one, three hundred and forty-eight thousand is, uh, allocated to the road program, which I'm, uh, believe we'll be speaking of in shortly here. Uh, there's a percentage that's tied I believe we'll be speaking of in shortly here. There's a percentage that's tied to the amount of curb and gutter that needs to get replaced in conjunction with the road program. There's also some opportunities for call-ins on this as well. We do have 5% contingency in there as well. Last year, if we recall, we came in slightly under the proposed expenditure. And I'm trying to see if I can see what, 286 was our estimate that we will be at this year. And I don't have the other number in front of me. But regardless, the apron, the other portion is 13,000, which is allocated for aprons to public works projects, adjustments, again, from public works types of projects. And that totals up to $361,075.
Dan, that's another project that you come forward to the city council separate, apart from the budget, in order to get approvals, and all those quantities are listed at that point also?
Correct.
Any more comments? You know?
Dan, you better have, you better ask, though, about the timing of this.
Correct. And I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna do that next here, is the concrete program. While we have selected a vendor, the proposal will be coming forth to city council either this Monday or the following council meeting. The contractor has requested to start early. Matter of fact, there was an addendum requesting that they have the opportunity to start in April, pending weather conditions. We, as staff, had agreed upon that we would let them start early, provided that the city council approved it as well. I noticed some, a certain amount of monies would have to be allocated in April, and then the remainder of that for May. What that dollar amount would be, probably close to $30,000 for this year, followed by the rest for next year.
And Dan, it's your understanding that this, because of the timing, really helps get the low, the price on the low bid. They're able to start.
That's correct, too, yeah.
Last year, that was approved.
No, last year it wasn't approved.
As far as the timing of it, no. They started a little bit earlier, about a week early, a week early, but it didn't have any real effect on it because they were just gearing up. They were just doing miscellaneous work, so no real invoices were generated.
John, I think what you might be referring to, we did have some bills that hit the prior fiscal year.
Because we had the tour coming.
Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, because we did the work in April.
I believe that was Scorpio, yes.
Even though we didn't actually pay the funds in until May. So it did hit the prior fiscal year.
I recall that was two years ago, Mike. I could be wrong. Because we brought it up last year, and I remember the council concluded, and there wasn't a lot of discussion, that we shouldn't start anything early. But obviously, yeah, obviously, in this period, if we could save a few bucks by starting when the weather was nice, that's, we'd really like to do that.
Just pay them slow. It doesn't matter when you pay them, it's when the work was performed.
Auditors require it to be recorded. That's the issue we had.
You know, these accountants.
So really, what I would do is, is I would allocate, Dan and I would figure that number out, or Dan would, but I would allocate probably $30,000 actually in this year estimated expense, and reduce next year by the $30,000. The aggregate number's going to be the same. But again, it would account for the work, some of the work to be done this year.
Go to 35, 48, 15. There's $180,000 for a thing called Emerald Ash War Cycle.
Right. And if you recall, this was discussed at the committee, at the whole meeting. I'll just do a quick recap on this. This will be for, obviously, the Emerald Ash Bore. And I'm not going to get into the explanation where the Emerald Ash Bore came from, et cetera, et cetera. But give me one moment here. I just want to pull up one of the spreadsheets here. I apologize. I thought I had it up here already. Basically, what is, what this program includes is the treatment of approximately 2, 2,600 ash trees. The product that we will be treating with is called Triage. It's been a proven product right now. For the last two years at least, there's been some very good studies done by different institutions, universities, for example, and independent researchers in regards to this product. So we, the city staff, would be injecting this insecticide by our licensed applicator, Mr. John Carr. In conjunction with that, we'll also be looking for a temporary or seasonal help, which will require to help Mr. Carr on this. So all these costs, again, are encapsulated with this $180,000. Now, this $180,000 includes the insecticide, the plugs, as well as a one-time expense for the equipment. The equipment consists of the hydraulic kit and air pack, miscellaneous components to clean it, as well as a cleaner itself. In respect to, I also compared it to, if we were to lose all these trees, and again, I won't get back into those, all the micromanaging of it, if you want to say, of all those numbers. But the bottom line was that if we were to lose these trees, and we had a total, had to put a reinvestment to replace all these trees, we would have an expense of $2.8 million.
And what is your projection for the second, third, and fourth year?
The second year, we do nothing. This is a program that is an application that's applied once every two years. Considering that it's applied once every two year, we have projected costs out for cycle two, which would be 2015. And that cost, our estimated cost would be approximately $176,000. And again, that's another year out, so that could change very well. Or a new chemical may come out as well. Cycle three would be presented in year 2017. So those are the three cycles. Over the cost of those three cycles, the total cost would be a little bit over half a million dollars. Again, this year, we're looking at a cost of $180,000 for year one.
Anybody, any comments? I'm going to leave the item in. Anybody object?
I think we pretty much said yes already on this during our.
I know, but I want to get it into the minutes.
If I may, one more quick comment in respect to the Emerald Ash Bore. While this program is to be done in-house, the city would, the city staff would like to go out and get bids for residents, or competitive quotes for residents. So we have the opportunity to give residents a contractor that's been selected by the city, if that's something acceptable by the committee here this evening.
Okay, moving down, just to recap it.
We're going to go forward.
Yeah. And Dan, just in essence, that's similar to what you do on the tree trimming, the curb, and all those other programs, where you bid out for residents in case they have this problem on their private property.
Correct. This one's just a little bit different because we're doing the work ourselves, not entering on private property. I've spoken to a couple managers from condominium associations, and they're really appreciative of us going out and seeking these quotes for them.
Comments, anybody? Next item is 35, 48, 55, street reconstruction. We have, if you go to page 63, the list of all the streets that are going to, are being proposed. It came up, the million, 299, plus some base, extra base repair, plus Downers Grove reimbursement for their work. They did, what did they do? They did.
Nottingham.
They did Nottingham for us. That's right. Anybody have any comments on street reconstruction rehab? Okay. Take a look at 43, 25, consulting professional.
Those are the expenses that we've moved from, actually, the operations fund into capital projects. So they, they were in this current year's budget. Again, however, they were not in the capital projects fund. We thought that was more appropriate to put those in the capital projects fund, because that's where the roadwork comes from. So that was just a move from the general fund over.
What account was it in the general fund?
It was under streets in the past.
It was under consulting as well.
Yeah, it's got consulting.
Paul, do you have that number? I didn't have that number. 43, 25 from capital was in streets, was in streets. I want to say it was 43, 25 in municipal services streets, too.
43, 25, yes, it was.
Okay.
And last year, it was $30,500 for the engineering bid, 13, 6 for the road cores and specs. And there was an NPDES fee of $1,000, which is not there this year.
Well, it's in this one.
That's in the NPDES fees.
NPDES, wasn't last year.
I don't think we had it identified specifically. This year, we identified it more specifically as a line item that's paid on annual basis.
It's a requirement by the state, so we might have had it in and not specified it.
No, last year it was specified. This year, it's not specified.
Oh, it is. It's on page 45, Mike.
Oh, 40, okay.
Yeah, 45, the top, I'm sorry. Under 43, 25.
How much do you have?
Oh, okay.
A little bit more in each one.
Go to page 63 for a minute. That's the road repair program. And the biggest thing I saw with this is that we typically have always done around five miles, 5.1, 5.2, 5. And this year, for some reason, we got 6.1 miles.
And that's correct.
Yeah, I thought it was six, I thought it was six miles, John.
Five, it's been five for you.
We've been averaging approximately 5.5 as an average. This year, what we did is, when we looked at the road program, I was going to ask Scott to put that up. But when we looked at the road program this year, there was several factors that put us up to the, it's the 6.06, we rounded it off to 6.1. First of all, is Coachman's Road. Coachman's Road is within a Carriage Green subdivision. We're doing several other roads within that subdivision. It made sense to do it now versus later, instead of generating all that construction traffic in there. The point system warrants it. At the same time, this was bid out as an option. In respect to Howdy Lane, again, that was a road that met the criteria. It's a road by itself, as we'll refer to it as. So if that road needed to be eliminated, that was also listed as an option. Iroquois Street, the same concept as Howdy Lane, while it met the criteria, if it needs to be reduced, we can push that back as well. Grand Street and Grand Court, obviously, if we're going to do Grand Street, we should also be doing Grand Court, as it's adjacent to Grand Street. Again, that was also listed as an option. Within the proposed budget, we have one point. I'm sorry, I don't have that total. Let me get back to the other page. $1,129, what is that?
1,299.
1,299.
Yeah, I got the money number.
It's 1.3.
So with that said, is.
You have $1,299. Is that what the number?
Correct.
Okay.
Again, we have.
Last year was $1,254.
Right. And what we looked at also is, we looked at the comparison on the cost per mile from 2012, as well as 2013. And the cost is relatively the same. So we could have the opportunity to do almost half a mile to three quarters of a mile more at the same cost as last year, on a per-mile basis.
And Dan, looking out the next two years after that, you're at about 4.4.
4.4 to 4.9, right in that range, yes. So really, what we're asking for this year is approximately half a mile more. Also, the Park District is doing their parking lots, and they've joined us on this contract on Plainfield Road, across the street from McDonald's. And we also have something else that's proposed in the water budget for one of the water plants. But anyway, that's for a separate discussion.
Any more comments on the street reconstruction at 6.1? Everybody satisfied? The next item on this thing I have is the debt fund.
John, I'm sorry, I had two, just two cleanups on the capital projects fund, really more information. One is, we do have a, and have been approved, and have submitted all of our paperwork for a grant from the state for some projects that were previously done. I never, I never bank on those, even if we have the approvals and everything, because I'm not sure the status of those. But I would consider it likely that over the next 12 months, if that grant becomes available, we're a recipient for that. So that would be some more money funneled into that. 150, I believe, is the balance. And again, we have all the paperwork in and submitted, and we follow up on that periodically, and we don't get a definitive date on that. So we're waiting for that. And also, municipal services had applied for an Illinois Clean Energy Foundation grant to improve lighting at the municipal services facility. Our intentions would be to add to the budget $30,000 in expense for that, and also $30,000 revenue. It's just a reimbursable grant, so we would have to pay the 30, and then we would get reimbursed. And Dan, if you wanted to spend a minute on what that grant is for?
Well, basically, what it is, is it's from the Illinois Clean Energy Community Foundation, and the city was awarded this grant back in October, actually, November of last year. With that said, we started to work on getting additional preliminary quotes from a local electrician, in which case, we went through an inventory, everything. Once we identified the inventory, we had to go back and review the criteria for the grant, in which case, we've spoken to Ken Seaton, our electrical consultant, and he did review the analysis to where there was a cost savings and this grant was worth pursuing. Unfortunately, the quote that came in, the preliminary quote that came in from the electrician was approximately $62,000. So what we're going to do is, once we develop an RFP, we'll put it into options. As those options are developed, the city will have the opportunity to pick and choose up to a worth of $30,000. In the event that we have the bids come in at 60,000 or 30,000 and above, we're going to go back to the Illinois Clean Energy and see if we can participate from them with additional funds. So that's our goal.
Have we ever done that before?
No, this is a brand-new grant. And again, you know, I think we were fortunate in getting the $30,000. And again, it's no cost to the city.
And Dan, again, this is for our building. It's not for the water pumps or anything.
Correct, yeah.
And so in the long term, we don't have any savings necessarily, because we don't pay those electric bills. But certainly, energy-wise, it's the right thing to do.
Correct.
So we'll be looking to proceed.
We had to get the bills from, well, I should say, the usage from ComEd. So that took a little while. And then we had to have the review, since there was no cost. We really had to make sure there was a benefit. And what it does is, it improves the lighting within the public works facility, the garage, for example, the offices. In some cases, they're LED or basically energy-saving bulbs or fixtures.
And you're expecting costs to probably be reduced from energy on that, too?
Oh, yes. We've already calculated that, and that's why we apply, the grant can be fully executed.
But are you saying for us, Ted?
Yeah.
You're saying, but because of our waiver status, we don't, right, Scott, we don't have, but we.
We don't pay for the lighting down at Public Works because we receive that free throughout, in agreement with ComEd, the franchise agreement.
But it does, I'm sorry, but it does reduce the energy consumed on the overall.
But at the same time, the brightness will get higher.
Right, yeah. The intensity levels will be a lot better than.
The reason I just bring this up is because I used to, when I was store manager, that was one of the biggest costs, is lighting. And when you replace all the balaces, I went through some of these stores, the brightness increased by around 30%, and the cost dropped usually about 20 to 25. So that's all.
Okay, any more comments?
It looks like, in this case, the savings in energy will go to ComEd. Maybe we can talk to ComEd and see if we can get some sort of a remedy from them.
They can buy a vehicle for us.
Scott, ultimately, though, ultimately, you know, our free electricity is paid for by somebody. So ultimately, again, this would reduce.
Really, the end consumer.
The end consumer, correct.
So if everybody, if everybody reduced their electric by a certain amount, really, that's savings by the end consumer and eventually by the market.
Okay, that's all we had on capital things.
Look, I have a document called Debt Fund Bond Series. Is that what you want to do?
That's next in line, and that is.
It has no page number.
Yeah, I sent that out, I sent that out separately.
It was emailed to us.
Yeah, I emailed those separately. There was, that was a minor fund. It wasn't finished by the time the budget went out. And that just really accounts for a bond that was issued. And it's, it will be paid, last payment of fiscal year, ending 18. And that was used for capital projects originally. And that's just part of the bond ordinance. We account for that. account for that separately. So it's listed separately, and that's just a wash, part of the real estate tax levy. And as you could see, originally, this was a bond in part that we issued, that was a taxable bond, that was out of the general fund, and that has dropped off, and that's why we saw a decrease in the tax levy in the general fund, plus the abatement that's proposed. So while you see this bond amount picking up, it's picking up for the decrease we had in another fund, so in total, it's the same for the resident.
Anybody any comments? Next item is Enterprise Fund, the Municipal Services Water Fund Budget Summary, page sixty-four. Anybody? You might go through the sales and stuff like that.
Yeah, I think in the cover memo, in the council, and really, most of the public has been aware of this, we've been receiving increases from the DuPage Water Commission, who have received increases from the city of Chicago. And the most recent increase was twenty-one and a half percent, that went to effect January of thirteen. So we, you know, looking, looking at those increases, I've put together a budget recommending a rate increase. Let me just get back to that page, John. Sixty-four. Our current rate of five ninety would be projected to go up to six dollars and forty cents, which I think I said was about, probably about five dollars a month for the user who uses eight thousand gallons of water annually.
With a seven dollar for FYI fifteen.
These are, these are numbers that are not of our doing, John, you know, this is...
I'm sorry, John, I was looking, I thought I had put that in the cover memo, the...
It was four dollars on average monthly, based on eight thousand, because it's a fifty cent increase you had in the memo.
Oh, I just, okay, I just missed it now. And then, obviously, we're able to prepare our budgets, looking out in the next couple of years, and we do know what the rates are from the Water Commission, what those are going to be. So obviously, like in this year, the water usage is weather-dependent, if we get a hot and dry summer, people use water more. In turn, then, we'll get more revenue, but we'll also have a larger expense to the Water Commission. So to be consistent over a three-year period, we use the same assumptions on usage and expenses to the Water Commission. So what we've tried to do is a rate that really only accounts, really, for the increase from the Water Commission, and our operational expenses, we've been able to keep, keep down. And also, as the sister fund to the Water Fund, we have the Water Depreciation Fund, which we'll get to at the conclusion of the actual Water Fund itself.
Comments, anybody? No. The next place to stop is, could be sixty-five, but it's more likely if you look at page sixty-six. I, I had a found in the budget, one hundred and seventy-six, four hundred for Irma. Is that the correct number?
Yes, I, I did budget more, more of a percentage of our liability.
It's like fifty thousand more.
Yes. I, I budgeted more of the total premiums of the Water Fund. Part of the reasoning for that is, our revenues in the Water Fund are increasing much more drastically than they are in the general fund, and as the price of water goes up, that in turn makes our premium go up, because it's partially based on revenue. So a lot of communities around here that run water departments are also seeing the same thing, their insurance premiums are going up, because part of that is based on the total amount of revenue you take in this municipality.
That's, that's about the only thing on that page, let's see if there was anything else. The next thing is on page sixty-seven, the resurfacing plan for Manning Road, thirty-five thousand dollars.
Correct, and that's a water plant that's located off of Manning Road, just north of Plainfield Road. If the committee recalls, it's similar to the condition of the Public Works Facility from last year, prior to it being paved, prior to it being paved. And again, this is already accounted for within the bid that we recently went out for as an option.
This is not where we park the vehicles that we...
We do have some, I'm sorry...
They're not parked on this, on this, this surface.
No, not from the police department, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes, no.
We've actually been able to get rid of all of those, too, so, yes. And we're not taking more in, because of the new way we assess the tow fees versus confiscating, so we really won't be taking in more of those cars to put over there.
Dan, when was the last time this was done?
Couldn't tell you that, unfortunately.
Okay.
It's been...
If you move down further on that page, forty-two, forty-one, and you look at the backflow prevention program and a backflow prevention test kit, about fourteen hundred dollars.
I'm sorry, which count are you on?
Forty-two, forty-one.
And what that is, is in reference to, as part of the EPA's review process, they come out usually every, once every three years. And one of the things that I had looked at was our backflow prevention program. Our backflow prevention program needs to be heightened to a new level. With that said, what it is, is a commercial application, particularly a commercial application has what they call a backflow device. This backflow device is usually installed after the water meter. And they're usually applied in commercial applications, because there's always the chance of, let's call it a kitchen sink or a slop sink, in which case, somebody was to have, create a back siphonage into our water main, this backflow basically prevents that from happening. With that said, there's the, there's a law that basically stays that these, our backflow prevention devices need to be tested on a yearly basis and need to be, the information needs to be forwarded to the city. Our record-keeping in that is, is not up to par. You know, there's some we have, there's others we don't. Occasionally, when we'll go look at a meter on a commercial application, we'll find that it's not in compliance. When we do, when we do see they're not in compliance, we immediately write the business owner a letter, tell him that it needs to be in compliance and have the backflow device checked. We also, at the same time, have a plumber on staff that we had the opportunity to hire a couple of years ago, and only a plumber has the opportunity to basically be certified in this. Now, the way this program works, it's partially outsourced for the cost that is being presented this evening. So are there any other questions I can answer on that?
You added additional machine operator training this year into the budget.
Correct. What this is, is part of an ongoing education.
Forty-two, sixty-three.
Eight, sixty-eight. Forty-two, sixty...
Three.
Three.
And what this is, is it gives our team an opportunity to go to the union site, which I believe is Mount Bullinbrook, a little bit southwest of there. It's a training facility grounds, and what it does is, they have machines that they have the opportunity to train on and be certified on, which basically gives them the opportunity to be a responsible operator for the city of Darien.
It's doubled from last year, I think, is it?
Correct.
Is, are there additional people going?
Yes.
Has the cost increased?
Yes, approximately nine hundred dollars per person, I believe it was, and there's two people that we have targeted, two employees that we have targeted for this year.
Okay, moving further along, go down to the capital purchases area, and take a look at a thing called SCADA System Communications Upgrade.
I'm sorry.
Thirty-five thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, which line item is that?
Forty-eight, fifteen.
Forty-eight, fifteen, page sixty-eight.
The SCADA System Communication Upgrade.
SCADA System Communication, the details on page seventy, the money's on page sixty-eight.
And what this was for, was basically for a radio read system, and what it gives us is the opportunity, our system currently relies on telephone lines. There's three, one, two, three, there's four places that these, that this equipment has to communicate with. We'll refer to the motherboard as on Plainfield Road, adjacent to Cass Avenue, from there, that's the brains of the outfit. So what happens is, through phone lines, it tells the Sixty-seventh Street Plant what to do or what to open, for example, as well as the location on Lamont Road, in which case, then, you know, more pumps on, and/or also the pump house on Seventy-Fifth Street, adjacent to Home Depot. So again, the little primary location communicates to all these portals to be able to tell it, okay, we need this much water, reduce the pressure, et cetera, et cetera. The phone lines go out quite a bit. We want to move to a better technology, and it's more reliable, is this radio read system, and also become, it'll be more efficient for our guys not to worry about alarms that sometimes we can't get fixed for days, and we're literally sitting at the water plants, monitoring them, you know, on a minute-by-minute basis, especially during a dry spell, for example.
Comments? How about the next line item, the water leak listing device times two, ninety-five hundred dollars?
Correct. What that is, we have two sets of these, and the old one is, basically, just went out a month ago. It is no longer any good, nor can it be fixed. These listening devices gives us the opportunity, when a resident calls and says, hey, I think the fire hydrant is leaking, or I think I might have a leak on my front lawn. So these devices allow our guys to go out there and to assess immediately for the residents or business, that, hey, there is a leak here, we need to call in additional people, we need to dig this up, whatever the case is. I'm sorry, I believe Mike said there was like a giant stethoscope, that's basically it.
The next thing is Cato, Cato D I C.
Cathodic Protection.
Protection, twenty-two, five hundred.
The cathodic protection is something that basically prevents, let me back up a second, what the cathodic production does is, it emits these very low electrical impulses into the water tower or the steel and the adjacent water mains around it. What it does is, it prevents premature corrosion on the inside of the tank, as well as the adjacent piping around it. And the one, and this is for the Sixty-seventh Street in Womack, and this one is not in service anymore, it needs to be replaced, it's referred to as a submarine.
You added in there times two.
That was the water device. The cathodic protection is for one tower, Dan?
Right, yes.
How often do you replace those, Dan?
Usually, they have a shelf life of anywhere from twenty to thirty years, in some cases, it's just a matter of replacing what they refer to as anal rods, it all depends what type of tank it is and what type of mechanism was set in place.
And Dan, you have those inspected annually, I believe?
Yes.
That's how you...
Yes.
Tell these need to be done.
There's a report that's completed every year.
The next item is page seventy-seven, the Motor Fuel Tax Budget.
We didn't, John, I don't think, unless there's questions, you didn't hit the depreciation part of the Water Fund on page seventy-three.
Oh, yeah, seventy-three. There isn't anything really to talk about.
Did yours print out well, seventy-four?
Well, well, it's a number of projects that staff is bringing forward as part of the Water Fund, so I thought that there may be questions, or if there's any explanations. Dan, one thing, if you could just let the council know, because we'll have to probably do that this year, the vent problems, because that's not still listed on here, I know we've made insurance claims, but that's an expense we'll probably hit still, I think, this fiscal year.
Correct, and I know, well, we've recently just updated the committee on it. Basically, what had happened earlier this year, the tank at Sixty-seventh Street in Womack, there's a vent on it. That vent is at the top of the roof, so it went up close to a hundred and forty feet up in the air. As the cathodic protection was being done earlier this year, what they had identified is that the rooftop of the tank was starting to basically collapse. It was collapsed approximately ten inches or so, dimpled in. So once we did confirm everything, as far as the report, pictures, Chicago Bridge and Iron, who basically manufactures tanks, they're adjacent, they're close to us, we had called on them to come and inspect the tank and to inspect what's referred to as a vent. They inspected the vent, and they found that the vent was not operating properly. So what would happen is, as the water is drawn down within this tank, it creates a vacuum. As it creates a vacuum, this vent lets air come in. Unfortunately, this vent was not functioning, to which case, it would not let air in, as the water was being sucked back out. So as it created the vacuum, it basically started to suck the roof in with it. Recently, what we've done is, we've contacted our insurance carrier, they're still investigating the claim, but we're looking at an expense of thirty, excuse me, of fifty thousand dollars on this tank. Again, that is not in here, because we still have not received the final estimate from Chicago Bridge and Iron, in which case, we'll be looking at, we'll be looking out for competitive quotes at the same time.
And this year's budget or next year's?
That's, right now, I want to say it could be carried over, fifty-fifty.
Our goal is to do this as soon as possible.
Right.
I think for the integrity of the tank, we're really trying to expedite this.
Current budget?
The answer is yes, but the pain, you know, the problem with the Sixty-seventh Street is the roof has...
How much is that coming out of in this current budget?
We haven't placed in a specific account.
It would come out of the Water Depreciation Fund, which is our fund that we use for, really, emergency repairs or larger capital.
About five hundred thousand dollars there.
Well, actually, that, that fund is, and I apologize, as I'm seeing, this copy didn't come out so well of the depreciation fund, but we have a fund balance in there for these types of projects of about six hundred thousand at this point. And what we try to do from the water operations is, we try to put money into this fund as needed, but at least every couple of years, but this is, it's very urgent, it's not emergency, but it's urgent, Dan.
Well, it will be an emergency, because if that thing, if that fails again, it has the opportunity to basically suck in the entire roof, to which case can cause a...
Where will the city council see the numbers?
I'm hoping by the next city council meeting, we, I'm sorry, not the next city council meeting, by April, we'll have something verified. Now, we also have the same concern at another tank, we had identified that this similar vent is, has also, was installed on this tank, I believe this is the one at Lamont Road. Again, this is the one that we incorporated back from DuPage County a number of years ago, so we're going to be, while there's no damage to that tank or the vent, the vent is currently working, we're looking at replacing that vent as well. You know, if someone was to ask, what's the preventive maintenance on this, without not knowing what was up there, what was in place, you would have never known. Usually, what happens is, when there's a vent in place, like for example, at plant number two, there's a plate that is usually put on the body of the tank, a vent and the type, and then from there, you basically have to refer to an owner's manual to see what the maintenance periods are.
So this fiscal year will come with the proposal for both the tanks, and we anticipate the work to be done either later this year, early next year. And Dan, if you could, I'm sorry, just also hit, there are some other projects in here, I think, probably, you can probably hit the pain of the hydrants and also the water main, I'm sorry, the water main replacement.
Valve replacements, correct.
Yeah, and then the Plainfield and Cass main replacement.
Well, years ago, the staff used to perform what was referred to as exercising valves. Again, when you exercise valves, it's a great exercise, but really, it does nothing to determine whether a valve is really holding or not. What's been identified over the course of the last several years, and we've been replacing them, we want to get a little more aggressive now, is when a water main break occurs, the goal of it is to shut off, to fix the water main as quickly as possible, and to isolate that leak within the shortest distance there possibly is. An example of this is, we recently had a leak at Claritin Hills Road and Seventy-Fifth Street, right at the corner, simultaneously, we had a valve that we were working, we were turning off, and that valve started to leak, to which case, that valve wasn't holding anymore, so now we had to move further back and isolate additional sections, to which we basically cut the school off from water. So one thing we looked at, we said, let's start budgeting for infrastructure for these water main line valves. Now, these valves are referred to as, the existing valves are basically iron gate valves, and what it is, is there's two different metals... When you shut the valve off, it's brass to steel. Today's valves are basically what's referred to as resilient wedge valves, which is rubber to steel, and it doesn't have that corrosive measure as these old, as these older valves do. So, what we want to do is, we want to basically start in Marion Hills. And what that means is that we want to be able to shut down every valve and isolate the valves and turn on a fire hydrant for the simplicity of it, to determine whether or not that valve is holding. This will be an actual inspection at the same time, and if that valve is identified to be removed and replaced, we'll do that. While we put seventy thousand dollars in there, each valve can take anywhere from five thousand, maybe up to ten thousand, depending on how it's encapsulated and what else is in the ground, and/or if additional water main has to be removed or replaced in order to accommodate this fix. Any questions?
Dan, you said you're going to start in the Marion Hills area, Marion Hills North and South subdivisions. How many other, would this be an expenditure every year with you moving throughout the city to do this?
I think this first year will give us a good, you know, a good figure. At the end of the year, the assessment will be based on how many we did, what problems we ran into, and then I'll be able to answer that question a little better. Right now, our goal is to do it in-house. What we looked at, keep in mind that this valve replacement is similar to the previous or the current budget, to where we had a certain amount of dollars in there, I believe it was seventy-five thousand. Of that seventy-five thousand, we had only used twenty thousand dollars. We found that our, our crews had the opportunity to go in there, excavate, remove and replace these valves versus outsourcing them. And this is something that we weren't sure if our guys had the ability to evolve to this, and we do. So, with this, we want to start this program.
You have a hundred and twenty-one thousand in the budget. I can't get the numbers to add up to a hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Well, there's another component of this, and not of this, there's another separate item, it's.
There's a seventy thousand dollar item and a forty-one thousand dollar item.
Correct. That's the hundred and twenty-one total, but of, their forty-one thousand.
There's a ten thousand dollar.
Oh, okay, got it.
And that's the hydrant painting.
Next item I'd like to discuss is the hydrants painting.
Yes, sir. The hydrant painting is something that we've had in the budget the last several years, what Brian and I have discussed, instead of doing it all in one year as a lump sum, to basically break it out over a course of three years, I believe it was, in which case we will be allocating forty-one, forty-one thousand dollars on annual basis until the fire hydrants are completed. And when these fire hydrants are painted, while it sounds simple, what basically happens is, a professional company comes in, sandblasts them to the bare metal, they prime them, usually it's with a zinc type of primer, and they re-coat them with a epoxy type of paint. There's even been some comments from residents that have passed on, you know, we should have summer helpers do these fire hydrants. I would not encourage that. Unfortunately, that only is temporary fix, it's not long lasting, and the results are usually catastrophic at the end of the day, especially when the threads on these fire hydrants are painted with a type of epoxy paint, it's very difficult for the fire, in the event of a fire, for firemen to remove those caps, as one example. And again, I would not recommend that type of practice.
Dan, you mentioned it's been in the budget the last few years. It's been requested, but we.
Excuse me, yes.
We have been putting this off for a number of years, correct?
And how many hydrants do we get for forty-one thousand?
We have thirteen hundred fire hydrants. I couldn't answer that question for you right now. We'd have to double check with a total.
About a third of those, Dan. We tried to do it over three years.
It's about a third, yes.
Anybody else, any comments on any of that stuff?
And Dan, I'm sorry, just to add, if somebody drives through now, because I know what's going to happen, all the aldermen will now bring attention to the fire hydrants, if you haven't looked at them before, and they'll be in their wards, and they'll see some that look really nice, and some are going to look really bad or rusted, or you'll be doing the ones that need it versus the ones that maybe are still holding up? Is that the intention?
Our goal was to target a subdivision, and, you know, that's why we have some type of systematic, west to east, north to south, whatever the case is, and take, do an evaluation of the worst hydrants and work those subdivision or subdivisions and move on from there.
So, if some happen to be in good shape yet, you'll just, you'll pass on those?
No, we'll do every hydrant.
You'll still do every hydrant, other than ones that might have been put in the last couple of years or replacements?
Last couple of years, correct, yes. Could always hold a lottery for which hydrants will be done and what not.
Okay.
Next item is page seventy-seven, really it's page seventy-eight.
And I think, I don't think you hit one that we wanted to talk about. There's ten thousand dollars in there for engineering on Plainfield and CAS with the project to follow the second year. I mean, that's the ten thousand dollars of the engineering on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, so Dan, you probably should give an overview of that.
What this engineering is, is in respect to DuPage County proposed project for 2014. We have identified a section of water main on Plainfield Road, fronting the old Amoco Station, all the way up to Plant Two, which fronts Phillips sixty-six and just a little bit west of there. That water main needs to be replaced. It needs to be replaced for a couple of reasons. Number one is, about a year and a half ago, we had a very bad water main break, if anyone recalls, on CAS Avenue, where we had to shut down CAS. I was out there as well on that one, and the condition of that pipe is not in the best shape. Also, the environment around it is not the best application for that type of pipe as well. With that said, we also identified that part of water main is very close, if not even on the property of the exist, of the existing Phillips sixty-six station and very close to their gas tanks. Again, this was a water system that was put in place and basically given to the City of Darien many years ago, and this is a water main that we feel is a critical component of the water system and should be removed and replaced with brand-new ductal iron water main. So, what we wanted to do was let the consultant for DuPage County, which is V3, provide us a proposal to engineer the water main. It's not a very difficult engineer, but nonetheless, it needs to be engineered, so it could be included for a bid for the September two thousand thirteen, September two thousand thirteen bid letting for DuPage County.
So, you're coordinating that with their overall Seventy-Fifth and CAS project?
Yes.
And I would imagine, Dan, there's probably some cost savings by doing it this way, because the county's going to be tearing up that already.
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have, the extent to the limits are up to Plainfield, right in their vicinity, and that's it.
Any more questions or comments? The last, the last one I have here is the municipal services motor fuel tax budget, and you go to page seventy-eight for the detail. And there is a lump of three hundred thousand dollars of salaries, and there's consulting and professional services of fifty thousand and more salt of a hundred and ninety-five thousand.
How much salt did we go through this year?
I know we're down on the salt for this year. I don't, I do not, let's see if I can, it's not a single, I don't have a single lump sum for what.
So, does this reflect the fact that we have a lot of leftover and you're just going to replace?
Yes, the balance. And don't forget, we still have an option out there, which I think we're going to exercise that option here with the last couple of snowstorms, which gives us the opportunity to buy additional salt at an agreed-upon price. And I believe this is option two of option three that we agreed, so we're going to be addressing that as well.
I'm sure, I'm not sure I understand that. We, we did not exercise all of our options for this year?
Correct. We had three options. Those options, I believe the first one expired in December or January, which we took the balance of what we needed then. We were a little shy because we couldn't fit it in. I believe it was six hundred or nine hundred tons the first time. Then, in the event that we had a severe snow season through February, then we would have gone to option number two. Option number two, I believe, started in January, February, and expires in March or April. And then in April, we had one more option, and again, I wasn't sure when that one expired, but it was, I believe all the pricing was very, was pretty much the same.
All three of those options, were they in the budget last year?
Yes, yes.
For a hundred and eighty thousand.
Right, for a total lump sum of a hundred and eighty thousand, but we didn't want to commit to that salt company that we were going to take three thousand tons, when we could only, you know, if we only needed six hundred right now, and then we had a bad winter that we can take an additional two thousand or whatever the remaining balances could have been to fill our bins.
All right, so, this price of a hundred and ninety-five thousand, what, what is it based on? Are you going to rebid? Are you going to do more bids?
Yes.
Get more RFPs on price?
Yes, we're going to be.
And then choose between exercising the options from this year versus the new prices?
Correct. We're going to be reviewing the current contract to see what other opportunities and/or options we have, and compare the current cost from the contract to the current market price. If the current market price basically dictates that, hey, it's time for you to go back out there and seek alternative pricing, we will create that RFP immediately and will request, again, options for next year, whether the first option will be summer pricing, that we'll be able to take so much salt by August, and again, from November to February, whatever the dates are, so we're covered for a full year in the event that something happens that's unforeseen.
Dan, for this year, we, current year's budget, a hundred and eighty, we're still estimating then to spend ninety. That's what you have there?
Correct.
For ninety, so, at least for this year, you're running about half of that allotment. I just didn't know if what you were saying would affect the year-to-date number, but we're pretty good with that number then?
At this point, right, based on these last couple of snowstorms, you know, unfortunately, we're above the average for the month already, so we'll see how that works out. We go from one extreme to the other, so we're going to take the balances over the current salt we have and make sure that the numbers are still in line here, or slightly need to be adjusted.
Yes.
What is the consulting professional services for, for fifty thousand?
That's the ash board removals, Dan, I believe.
Yes. And what, again, it's for, Illinois Department of Transportation has agreed that they will participate with the Emerald Ash Board. The only portion that they'll participate in is allow us to remove the trees. No planting, no preventive maintenance, this is only for the removal. That's the only thing the motor fuel tax will cover.
There's, go ahead again.
And then, remind me what this miscellaneous income was for last year?
Miscellaneous.
The hundred and two thousand under revenue? For the actual fiscal year?
Yeah, that was, that was an extra allotment on the revenue end that we received. The state gave an extra allotment of a hundred and two thousand, which we think is a one-time deal. I don't think they're, they'll be giving it or proposing it again. That's why we didn't budget it. Right, I think that covers it, that was just.
Fingers crossed, but.
Yeah.
Can't anticipate it.
Yeah, just to clarify, I think Mayor Weaver asked in respect to the salt, a hundred and ninety-five thousand, what we had budgeted for this year, equates to twenty-four hundred tons, and that's based on a sixty-five dollar cost per ton.
Are you talking about your estimate, your anticipated cost?
Yes, anticipated cost, yes.
It's sixty-five a ton?
Yes.
And how many tons did you say?
Twenty-four hundred tons.
Twenty-four hundred tons. That's pretty much what you, what it was last time, last year?
Close to it, right.
This current fiscal year?
I believe it was sixty-three fifty, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, and same twenty-four hundred tons?
I'd have to double check to see what we used, but it was based on a twenty-four to three thousand tons, yes.
Mr. Banner, you might go over the salary account forty ten and explain why it's balanced the way it is.
Yeah, we break out, one of the things with MF, our motor fuel tax, we're only allowed to use that money as the state says we can in accordance with their guidelines. So, as an example, if we used MFT money as part of our street reconstruction program, it would add a lot of engineering expense and other, other things that are required by the state. So, years ago, we went away with trying to use MFT money, not for things like roads or ditches or things like that, but use it more for operational items, because they don't have regulations that would necessarily incur additional costs, like additional engineering and things. So, we account for three hundred thousand in salaries, and that's an estimate of what, what our municipal services street department does that are allowable under MFT expenditures. And last year, I think because of the light snow, we actually had to adjust that, and that salary line was reduced, but we were able to allocate some of the benefits towards that, so in the aggregate, it was about the same number.
One last item, there's a fifty thousand dollars for consulting. What are we, why, why was that put in and what purpose is it there?
I believe that's what Alderman Belkey referred to earlier. That's a fifty thousand dollars for the Emerald Ash Board to remove the Emerald Ash Board.
The Emerald.
Yes.
That's all I have on that. The next thing I have in the book is special service area, number one, fund budget.
Yeah, one sec.
That's the Terra Hill.
Yeah, that's what we sent out. That also wasn't in the original budget, it was emailed. The area around Terra Hill has several wetlands and also stormed, storm management areas, and the city has the responsibility to maintain those. And when that subdivision was built, a special service area was approved, and we request from just those residents that are covered by the special service area, we request about five thousand dollars. And then that, those expense goes to really wetland maintenance and also stormwater maintenance as it's necessary.
My only question there, Brian. In the three-year projection, it's projected that there's zero balance remaining in the fund balance. Is the fund supposed to terminate at that point, or?
No, that just, actually, what that does is, what we try to do is look over a three-year period and meet and cover our expenses. You know, that, that special service area money is supposed to be collected, so we can manage that. So, in theory, you know, that could be zeroed out every year, and then the following year, we would request the five and then have expenses for the five. But sometimes what we do is, is to be standard and collect that five over a number of years, whereas we might look out in our second year of a multi-year program, we spend a little more, a little less, but for here, we just, we should be down to zero, but that doesn't end it, because the maintenance always continues.
I hate to break it up, but we ran out of things to talk about.
No, we didn't.
Not yet. I have a couple, I think, and Tina has a couple.
Start. Doesn't matter, go ahead.
The package is done. I'd like to bring up what Sylvia would have brought up if she was here, and that's the crossing guard. And she sent us a supplemental worksheet that she did, and I think the main point of the worksheet was to point out that the tech, all the taxpayers of Darien are paying for this crossing guard as opposed to the school districts only and the other ones. And my thought, I haven't changed my thinking on, you know, keeping it in there, however, the school district's budget is from the fiscal year seven-one through six-thirty, so we aren't sure at this point if they're going to put that number in their budget. So, I would think, you know, maybe we could keep it in as we voted, but certainly keep the dialogue open with, with the board there and see if they can incorporate that into their budget this year. I think that's a fair, you know, discussion to have with them. I wasn't quite sure what she was doing as far as showing all the salaries, since there's more components than just salaries in the budget.
Yeah, there was something Sylvia looked at, I believe, from their website, that she was, she was looking to illustrate the fact that they have the ability to pay, because I think there, there's, you know, there's a couple of things. One is equity, who should pay? And secondly is, there may be an argument, someone to make an ability to pay. And I think, you know, we've kind of heard all of those, or both of those, as this discussion has gone through. And I think one of the reasons, a year ago at this time, we talked about it and gave notice to the school, was to give them time, because their budget cycle is a little different. But, you know, I'm not sure what you're suggesting, Tina, in terms of offering to them, because we've done that on several occasions, and they said, no, we're not, it's our responsibility.
Right, well, a couple of things. I mean, the, to just compare a salary of a teacher, I don't think makes a lot of sense without looking at the whole. So, they're, they're, they're doing an unbalanced budget in the whole of one point two million, okay? They have a fund balance, so they're bringing that in, but they're running on a negative one point two million, as opposed to the other school district, sixty-three, that's running at a negative six thousand. So, so I think that's part of it. Again, I don't think, I don't know if they're going to put it in the budget. Now, what if they don't put it in the budget and we don't either?
Well, at this, at this point, it's in our budget. Well, at this, at this point, it's in our budget, and you know, majority of the council said yes. So unless, you know, unless there's, somebody reconsider's it, it's still, it's still in there.
Maybe I, I'd just like to shed one side light to this, but I don't know the answer. Last night, Alderman McGyver sent me a copy of the school's budget, and in her note to me, she said, if you take a look at tab A twenty-seven, for instance, you will see that one crossing guard is budgeted, was budgeted in their last year's budget. I went to that tab, I could not find any breakdown of the salaries indicating that crossing guard. I emailed her to that effect, I was tied up all day, I just got out fifteen minutes before this meeting.
I tried looking for it as well, I couldn't find it.
And I couldn't find it, and I asked her, I emailed her, I don't know if she's responded to that.
That twenty-one thousand?
I don't know, she didn't say, she said there was one crossing guard that was budgeted in last year's. I guess in that respect, I'd ask to give her some additional time to maybe consider, or have the opportunity to present, if that is a fact, to present that before we do finalize the ultimate budget.
I think also, I think it was also pointed out, I think in Megan Stolt's comments was, this is a planned deficit budget, because they want, they, they- Yes, they're adding a whole bunch of technology, so they're planning to have a deficit budget. They don't have to have a deficit budget.
Just like we are with the ditches.
Mike, I think the point Sylvia made there was, they approved a three percent increase for executive administrative salaries. The difference before and after was just over eight thousand, the cost of one crossing guard. That's what I-
Okay, I see, I read it differently, I thought she indicated that-
Yeah, that's what something she had sent.
That's how I, well, that's one of the points I interpreted as well. But, I mean, I guess my thought was, it's not really what we're here for, to see how they're spending their money. That's another, show up at their board meeting and quiz them about, you know, how they're, they're allocating their resources. But again, I just wanted to point out that their fiscal budget cycle is a little different than ours, and I think between the two, if she can find it in the line item from last year-
Let her mark it.
We can, you know, relook at it.
Let her finish. Unfortunately, when we talk about it and people watch it, you get responses, people are unaware of this, and now they're aware of it. And again, I haven't received a lot of emails, I've received a number of emails from people who live in Ward Five, who've said, well, we're paying taxes for District sixty-three to have crossing guards, and we're also paying taxes for District sixty-one, where our children don't go to school. And they didn't like that. And, I mean, there was an overwhelming number, but there are a few. And, you know, when people really think about it, it probably bothers them a little bit. These people expressed that by email to me, so I, I wanted to bring that up, and say that I think more people would be bothered, I'm bothered by it. I, I don't want to give up, I don't want to do anything that creates unsafe situation for the children. I just think the school has a responsibility to bear that cost, as do the other school districts.
One of the things I know Alderman McGyver brought up at, at the committee level was not necessarily us looking how they spend their money, but I think District sixty-six, as, as an example, has made a decision, and they fund buses for all the students. So, you know, they, they've made a different decision than maybe the other school districts in terms of how that is paid for, and I think that's in part, you know, looking at how the other districts are spending, but-
Alderman, I've seen-
Let's look at some history on this. Back in November, Alderman Belkey asked, and Brian, you responded to our inquiry, but you copied all of us, where a survey was conducted as to what other municipalities do in this regard. Do you recall that, this email that you sent out in November twenty-sixth?
Well, not specifically, but I know there was an email that went out as part of the public work, or the police committee, because that issue came up, yes.
I, I have a copy of it here, and let me just review it very quickly. Approximately thirty municipalities responded. Out of those thirty, there were three that said the school districts pay for crossing guards. There were two where the cost was shared between the school districts and the municipality. And approximately twenty-five said the cities pay the crossing guards out of their police budget. These municipalities include Bartlett, Bowling Brook, Darnsgrove, Elmhurst, Glen Allen, Glendale Heights, Hanover Park, Lyle, Lombard, Roselle, Biller Park, Warrenville, West Chicago, Wheaton, Willowbrook, Wooddale, Woodridge, Addison, Flossmore, Cicero, and Yorkville. Now, it appears that it's not unusual for the cities to pay for crossing guards. In fact, it appears to be the norm. So given that, I think, in terms of responsibility, you know, what do all these municipalities know that we're, we're questioning? In my opinion, and I've said this before, the city has the responsibility to protect all of its citizens on the street, and the schoolchildren belong to that category, and the school district has the responsibility. At the same time, I understand the argument, that we have three school districts, and we're paying for crossing guards for only one school district. But the other school districts haven't come forward, requested for it, okay? So we're anticipating that they want the service. Let's assume that they do, okay? Let's assume, how, how can we go about doing this? You know, we can't drop it like a hot potato and expect that the school district will pick it up. You know, in this case, I'm kind of sensing that this is like, you know, the city versus the school district. I think it ought to be city and the school districts together to address this problem. And to do, the way to do that is maybe you, Brian, but somebody sitting together with all the school districts, and say, here is the, the issue that's come up, and how do we address this? How do you, how do you solve this problem? One option might be, you know, the city doesn't want to do this on their own. They don't want to hire the crossing guards, or schedule them, or something like that, they want, we want to outsource it. That's what I heard that being done. Fine, then the city goes out and bids this service, and makes it available to all the school districts. Those who want to participate can, and those who don't, they don't. But those that who participate, then maybe they can do cost sharing with the city. I don't know what that formula might be, but you can easily work it out with the superintendents of the three school districts, find an equitable way to address this issue, and once it's, you know, agreed upon between the city and the school districts, then you bring it up here, and then, you know, it becomes a basically pro forma approval. But we shouldn't be arguing this, you know, in public venue like this, and then, you know, drop it, and drop it on the, in the lap of the school district, you know, as Alderman Belkey said, what if they don't? You know, we shouldn't be, I think, taking chances with something that's this important, and should be able to handle it amicably by talking to the school districts. So we should keep it on the budget, we should keep it on the budget, but maybe at the same time, you know, talk with the school districts and come up with a resolution, either for this fiscal year, you know, because their fiscal year is kind of lagging from ours, or for next fiscal year.
I, I disagree with your premise, Alderman Afchi, that we're dropping it like a hot potato. This has been discussed for over a year now, the school district's been invited, they've had their opportunities to discuss it. We've expressed our concern to them. What do you think the response is going to be? Oh, yeah, we'll be happy to take it on. Of course, they're not willing to do that, and they're not going to be happy to do that. I believe Administrator Van has already done that, he's already reached out to them, they said no. And last year, their excuse was, yes, they didn't have it budgeted. At this point in time, that's why, if you remember, my recommendation last week was maybe as a way of weaning us off of it, was to do maybe half of it this year, and half next year, join in the responsibility. I agree, it's important to protect the children, but is that responsibility something that should fall on our police department? Or is it something that really is the school district?
Okay.
So I don't believe it's a hot potato, and I don't believe it's a surprise to anyone at this point. It's just a matter, just like us, if we can get the county to provide something, naturally, you look to having those funds covered by someone where it's not out of your pocket, or our residents' and our taxpayers' pocket, if you can.
Okay, we, I don't, I don't believe we've really talked to them in the sense that we could do cost sharing. You know, of course, they refused it, they, their school board president came to one of our meetings here, spoke against it. He also came to our Darien Committee for, you know, Government Cooperation.
Keep, keep using this, they, he, you, keep using the same excuse about public safety. And I guess, I guess we, we, the City of Darien, have to assume all liability that happens on every street in the City of Darien, because we're in charge of public safety in that, in that frame of, of mind. But go ahead, I'm sorry.
But, you know, as I mentioned, twenty-five out of thirty, that's like eighty percent of the, eighty-five percent of the municipalities are doing this already, right?
Just, just to clarify that, many, many of those municipalities, some of those municipalities that you've mentioned are single-school district municipalities. So if they're paying for it, they're only paying for one. Darien is a little unusual, even though we have many more school districts than we should have in the State of Illinois. Having three within a city of twenty-three thousand is different than a lot. So I wouldn't say, if you look at how many of the twenty-five that pay for the full bill, I venture to say you're going to find probably more than half, where you only have one school district in that municipality.
Excuse me, can we put together, does somebody want to make a motion to take the money out of the budget? Does anybody want to make a motion to take the money out of the, for crossing guards out of the budget? No, then I stop talking about it. And next item? Anybody got anything else they want?
I, I wanted to bring up the other category for the beautification, and after going through the process tonight, I think that there's a couple of items that already have been addressed, that were on my list, my list, such as the hydrants, and, you know, the seventy-fifth and CAS.
You wish to make a motion on any subject?
No, I'm just kind of summing some things up, right. And so, so that's one thing, I didn't know if anybody else had any other ideas, or wanted to put any thoughts aside for that.
Well, Tina, you're talking about beautification type of projects still? I think when, I think your suggestion was, should we put any sum of money aside for, for beautification projects, right? Is that-
Outside of what we already talked about today, which was the-
Let me ask a question, Dan, didn't you apply for a grant dealing with seventy-fifth and CAS, where we could do something with the lighting that would be in conjunction with that expansion of Seventy-Fifth Street?
Yes, and it was referred to as a landscape enhancement grant, and that grant was in the total of approximately three million dollars. What included was fencing, for example, eight-foot high, I believe it was six to eight-foot high fencing, adjacent to properties that warranted a higher fence, as well as streetscaping. Streetscaping included paver brick or concrete stamping on CAS Avenue from Plainfield Road, approximately up to Bone of Beef, as well as lighting. That lighting was decorative lighting, street lighting. Also berms and plantings were included in there as well. Again, we have not heard anything from the state on that one, we were hoping to hear already something back in November.
Was that a matching grant, Dan?
I'm sorry?
Was that a matching grant?
I believe it was seventy-five, eighty-twenty, or seventy-five, twenty-five, out of which the county would have been also participating, and again, not getting into a real long discussion here, but there was some offset with what the county was going to do for the landscape, and which would have given us additional money, so.
What was out of pocket, worst case?
It might have been five percent, ten percent at that point.
Of what number, a million?
Three, we don't know what, depends what the grant they're going to give us, if anything at all.
I know the application, I mean, what you, your budget was-
Three million dollars.
Pretty good, yeah.
Yeah, so based on three million, if we take the ten percent out of that, you know, three hundred thousand.
Mr. Vann is going to make a series of changes based on the discussions we've had in over the last two meetings. I would recommend that sometime, like in a seven o'clock session, after he gets the numbers all put together, that he review them with us, and so that he has the numbers, and we understand it, because we think we understand each other, but very often, you need to really go through the numbers shortly and cover that. Can you do that for us?
You mean the changes-
Yes.
From the proposed budget to where we at, or at today?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's the recap sheet.
You want to give us that sheet and go over it with us, or just give us that sheet?
Yeah, that's, the, the, the normal course is that I would send it out to the alderman, and I don't remember, actually, John, if we looked at it last year, I think we might have had, we might have met before the city council meeting at six-thirty to seven to look at that. It's been pretty minor this year, I think we could do that, you know.
Then it could be from seven to seven-thirty.
We have the, the council workshop setting, so if you want to do something special, six-thirty to seven is probably, probably a better time period.
You'd have the document to us like a week or so ahead of time, maybe?
Well, I mean, I have a lot of it done already today, I mean, it's just a spreadsheet, there wasn't a substantial. I would hope to have it done tomorrow and send it out.
Are you, you're not going to revise the, the recap pages for each of the budgets?
Well, what I would intend to do is, is really a spreadsheet of the change, I could probably put the, the new-
Yeah, revise all of the, the-
Yeah, I could.
Yeah, revise all those, I think that's more of what we were-
Yeah, I mean, it would show what the balances are, but again, sometimes if I just do it in the document, it's hard to trace back. So I'll do both, I'll do-
Okay.
I'll do a, a, a change sheet, and I can do the-
Revise the-
And revise the budget pages. I, yeah, I should, I would do that before-
About a week?
Well, I would do that for Monday night, if the council, has, the council, the city council meeting Monday night, if you're interested in doing it as soon as that, or- Because there are, the only couple of things I was going to bring up are, based on the budget, the council needs to take a couple of separate actions. One would be the tax abatement, that's a separate ordinance. Both the, the general fund, the five-hundred and three thousand, but also in the water fund, we have a scheduled tax abatement, because we have sufficient funds in there, so that would be two items. Plus the water rate increase. In order to get that for the May budget, we would like to move on that no later than the second council meeting in March. So we have those few things, so.
Alderman Afchi brought up something that maybe we should be thinking about putting into the budget. If we do go to these school districts and end up adding more crossing guards to our budget, we better, we better factor that into our, our future budgets too, because it's going to cost us more money if we're going to have to do all school districts.
Well, I would, I would recommend that, if anything were to change, that wouldn't happen for a year out. I don't know if, you know-
Well, you do the projections, you know, so.
Not, not necessarily, if we do cost sharing with them.
We already heard from them, they don't want to do cost sharing.
I'm not sure.
You're talking about the other districts might want to do cost sharing?
We're adding, we're adding a new thing to our budget now.
But if the expenses are lower.
Adding crossing guards for all the school districts, you know, what you're suggesting.
Yeah, that's, no. I didn't hear that anybody else picked up on that, though. Anyone else want to go that direction?
I'm not clear that it's going to be much different.
That's why, that's why it's, this, this argument, this blows up in our face, is what I'm saying.
Not, not necessarily, we, we have twenty-four thousand dollars in the budget, correct? And this-
Going, and going up.
Well, not necessarily, because it depends on what sort of cost sharing you agree to, right? And the other two school districts may not want to participate either, so it may be a little different, but twenty-four thousand dollars, let's, let's, let's be honest, it's not a lot of money for our district, for the city, it's not a lot of money for the school districts either. We're not really arguing about the quantity of money. I think once the minds come together, this is not a very complicated issue.
Well, Helial, I, I think of it, I think of it more, when I think about all the things that we have left out of the budget, that you haven't even seen, because we wanted to have a balanced budget here, the things that we're putting off for our own residents because of a simple thing like twenty-four thousand dollars. It's a bother to me, that's why I, I've gone to the length I have on this issue.
Are you implying, Madam Mary, these are not our own residents, the children that we're talking about? You're not implying that, are you?
Don't, don't go there, do not go there.
Alderman Afchi, I mean, you yourself are saying that you don't like the idea of doing too many ditches, because we're deficit spending, and yet you're proposing something that will, it's got to add to the deficit. It's got to cost us extra. If you go to any district and ask them if they want more money, which one do you think is going to come back and say, no, thank you?
We're talking about twenty-four thousand dollars.
I don't care what you're talking about, as the mayor said, how many things have we cut out of the budget over the years?
There's a risk associated with this, okay? You, you've said that before, we always have to compare the benefit, benefit.
Look what the police department has done over the years to trim their budget. Look what the police department has done over the years to trim their budget.
I don't mean to disrespect, I think we beat this thing to death.
I agree.
I, I, if you want to make a budget modification, and you got to say so now. We've said, "No." Every time I've asked you, you've all said, "No, leave it like it is." If you want to make, make the change, make a motion and do it. Otherwise, stop, because we're just wasting time.
There was no change to delete it, but now what he's offering is a change to increase it, I think, is what the mayor is indicating.
Yeah, that's...
If somebody wants to make a motion, now's the time.
I, I think what we're trying to do here is just get our thoughts on how we're going to, I mean, it's in the budget, okay? But our thoughts of how to continue this discussion in the future, because I think what's sitting in our minds is, why should we do one and not the other? I mean, we want to be consistent. With your point, I think maybe it's, what you're saying is, at the end of the day, if we all consolidate together, maybe the price will go down, and that's where some might, might net effect, you know, the, the other cost sharing, or something like that. So it's something we could put off for another discussion, but I think, you know, it needs to be discussed.
And if this is going to be a joint effort, you know, among the three school districts, it makes sense for the city to take the lead in contracting this out, because, you know, we have a lot of contracts. If you look at the school districts, you know, I used to be on the school board. The number of contracts that they have, they've contracted out, we do that in one sitting. In one of our school, city council meetings, when we talk about the, the public service contracts, we have a lot of experience in contracting out managing contracts. We could provide that, you know, the opportunity to buy into this in the same way that we do it with paving, with salt purchasing. That could be the, kind of the leadership that we show in the city and provide this service to our citizens. We're not doing this for the school districts. We're doing it for our citizens, and they're all our citizens. So I think we could, we could make this work. I don't think it is a very complicated issue. And the cost that we're talking about, you know, isn't going to make us break us and isn't going to make or break the school districts. I don't know why we're even, you know, discussing it to this level of detail, because this is not a complicated issue.
Because it's laying a precedent, Hillel.
I didn't bring it up. Someone else brought it up.
Okay, now, is there any other topic anybody wants to talk about that relates to the budget? Is there anything that you want to just talk about? I need a motion to adjourn.
So I just have to be clear, though. Do you, do you want to get together then at 6:30 on, on this Monday night prior to the council meeting to recap?
Instead of having another budget meeting?
No, not, we don't need another meeting.
Yeah, there's, there's, no, I mean, there's no, no more budgets to talk about. It's only to look at recaps of any of the changes. So I think what I'm hearing is, is the council wants to do that, and then we'll work over the next couple days to get a packet out with, with the changes.
Okay, so then on the calendar, we should mark for March 4th a committee of the whole meeting at 6:30 PM? And then council meeting afterwards, like normal?
For a work session at 7:00.
Okay.
I need a motion to adjourn.
And is it, is it safe for the staff then proceed with the tax abatements? Because we want to get those ordinances going, the tax abatements and the water rate ordinance.
Would you have that on the consent agenda?
It needs to be done.
It wouldn't be until the March 19th?
Well, we, you know what, originally, Scott and I had talked, I was trying to get the abatements in the water rate on as soon as possible, which would be the next meeting in March. Scott, the, the water is more sensitive than the abatements. I just hate putting off the abatements only because there's a time period. Now, if the council does that, the second meeting in March, we're fine, as long, you know, there's no vacations or quorum issues. We'll be fine, so we could do that. The water rate, Scott?
The water rate will definitely be on for Monday. The abatements most, well, we have a couple questions we need answered, and then we can have it on, so...
Okay.
So that'll be the March 19th meeting, I believe, is the date?
Yeah, so the water will put on, is coming Monday, so we can get it in the abatements.
You're going to do the review of the budget changes this coming Monday?
Monday at 6:30, I'll review the changes to date with the, with the...
7 o'clock, you're going to do anything?
7 o'clock's the workshop for the council meeting.
And what about the water rate?
Then the water rate ordinance, we would have on for approval that evening. On Monday night for approval, yes.
Okay. Does everybody like that?
For the, for the abatements, is that going to be under the consent agenda? I don't think I heard the answer to that.
I think we've put those under new business.
Yeah, I would prefer that.
Yeah.
Discuss it more.
Brian, when you do that Monday, and I think this is helpful for people to be reminded of this, when you look at the survey, and you look at the comments that people submitted, a lot of people still are under the impression that they pay thousands of dollars to live in the City of Darien. And I realize they probably do.
To the City of Darien, to the City.
Or to the City of Darien. And if you read some of the comments, you'll, you'll see that in there. And I think what, and you've done this before, but I think because you're discussing the abatement Monday, or that's going to come up with the budget, it might be good just to go over that again and talk about what a person is paying on a tax bill of X amount of dollars. Because I don't know if a lot of people really go down and look at the, each line and see that the City of Darien is, you know, is the City of Darien pensioned.
Every year the tax bills come out, my phone rings and want, wanting to know why their tax bill went up. And I explain the various line items. "The city has not increased the levy in a few years." And I explain how the other districts have, and that they really need to call the other districts and get involved, because that's, that's the impact. So I would imagine we would have, we, we could do an overview like that, Joe, the second meeting, when the tax abatement's on the ordinance, because that's when it'll be on TV.
I think, I think it's helpful for people.
Second meet, second council meeting in March.
Second council meeting in March.
Actually, exactly what I was thinking, because the two things that stuck out to me, again, on the survey, was the lowering of taxes and then the beautification idea. We currently pay for the 2011 Pay-12 taxes 4.3% for Darien out of the whole. And as I was looking at the districts, the school districts, and I included District 86, which is Hinsdale High School, and I talked about some of the unbalanced budgets in the other districts. Well, the high school is, is at a, they're balancing their budget, a surplus of $480,000, and they have $50 to $60 million in their fund balance. So if I were a resident, I'd say, "Okay, well, Darien is at 4.3%. Plus, we're giving this abatement of $500,000. We're, we're tightening things up here." I would suggest to look at the school district, particularly the high school, and try to get some money out of that, try to get them to rebate or...
There was talk at the beginning of the first meeting on the budget of $500,000 being possibly given back in some form to the residents. Do you plan to be able to continue to do that, or has that idea been dropped?
That's the abatement we're talking about.
Yeah, that's the tech, the, the general fund property tax abatement is approximately $502,000, which was our entire levy for non, non-bond, non-pension-related items. And, yeah, that, the proposal is that the council would approve a tax abatement ordinance that would reduce the property taxes by that amount on the city's portion of a tax bill, which equates to somewhere between, you know, $7,500, $100, probably.
Do you still plan to leave that alone?
Well, I plan to bring an ordinance to the city council the second week, I'm sorry, the second meeting in March that effectuates that abatement by the approval of an ordinance, yes.
That's okay. Anybody else, anything? A motion to adjourn again?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. You've been very nice and it's been a very calm meeting.
Turning the microphones off.